We're going to have it for 15 minutes and we're not going to keep it open for 15 minutes if people are not going to comment. So we're just going to leave it open for 15 minutes or as soon as it's done. Yeah, so the public comment is something that you're -- it doesn't have to do with the applicants, okay? The public comment is for other than applicants tonight. Right? So it's not on the record, your public comments, but we are listening. So that's what the public comment is.
Can I make my comment?
Sure, and if you would like, we have it on the podium up here with a microphone so you can stand there. So people can hear you unless you think you're loud enough.
I talk pretty loud, but just to be sure. Anyway, this is in reference to the proposed Dunkin' Donuts, which will be on the intersection of 375 and 28 in West Hurley.
That's going to be at the hearing. The hearing is in a few minutes. There's a public hearing on that, but this is if you're talking about Dunkin' or Beesworth. Jack, I can hear you. Welcome. Yes. One, two, three, four, five?
It's not very loud.
No.
You had it going pretty good last time.
One, two, three, four, five? Hello, 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 hello? Hello?
Can you hear me on this?
Loud, no voice that people can hear.
Okay, good. That'll work the weeds.
Hi, I'm Georgia N. Chapin, and the comment I want to make is regarding the accessibility of materials for the planning board, meetings, and the agenda, and any of the activity around any of the planning board issues. The website lists, just in no particular order, all the documents related to a project. So for example, the Cedar East, the documents, some of them have names, some of them have dates. There's no consistent naming or dating convention, and the only way to find something often is to go through and click on one document after another until you find what you're looking for. And I think it could be cleaned up with some rules, and there are people who know about doing this. And it gives the impression of intentional confusion, and I know that's not what the intention is. But this would serve everybody. It would serve the planning board members, the members of the community, the people who are proposing the projects. And I'd like to respectfully suggest that that be done in a more direct and efficient and transparent way so that we can all have access to the materials comfortably, in a timely manner. The second thing that's somewhat related is agenda and minutes. The agenda, we get nicely. The minutes come out much later. And I think it would be a good idea to post the draft minutes. But I mean, I got them from Lisa. She was very happy to furnish them to me when I asked her for draft minutes. But there's no reason they shouldn't be posted. They could even be taken down once the regular minutes are put up, but that's something I think that should be available to the public because the regular minutes are posted quite late and hard to go back and for the public to even remember what happened in the meeting and know how accurate or not those minutes are. So thank you very much for listening.
We have our town council member, Mike Bomsey, who's liaison between the planning board and the town board. So I don't know if you would like to say a couple of words on the digital filing system?
I don't need Mike. The thing is, what we're doing right now, we have set up a communications committee that Toby Carey is the chair of, and his goal is to make the website more applicable, more user-friendly. And we know there's an issue there, there's a problem they're going through here. And what I've seen so far from their work, we're making headway. We're going this way. So it should be a little more time needed, but it's going to get done. It's going to get done very shortly, and I'm assured by the committee that it's going to happen. So we've just got to be patient a little bit. I mean, this is a dinosaur, the old digital tow cab, more or less. It's going to be changed, and we're looking at things and so forth. And one of the things that we, as a town board, we have given lots of money from the federal and state government, from COVID, more or less, to upgrade broadband, upgrade communications, and this is one of the things that we're doing. And what we actually told Toby and his committee is like, you know, when you start making recommendations about what equipment you need, go for the moon. Shoot for it. Go for as much as you think you can get, and then we'll go down from there. So just be patient, and in a couple of -- soon. Soon? Well, there's an R and B out there. Hopefully, we'll get it soon.
Will you be going back and reorganizing the past documents? Because that's really, you know, that's your historical record, and if the past documents are chaotic. So that's going to be part of it.
Yes. Well, first, we're going to set the website first. Go forward, and then backwards also. Going that way. We're going to try that way. It's going. It's difficult. It's hard to do it. Your complaint is, we've heard this many times, and we are working on this very diligently. So it'll happen soon enough.
Thank you, Mike. Hi, Mike.
Lyndale, Alton Lane. My neighbor was telling me, this is as regards to the project at the end of Alton Lane, with the links, lot procedures, now called Furlong House. It was a sign at the front of our street with no direction on it. And the comment from the building inspector was, there's nothing going down there, so who cares? However, there are two Airbnb's operating up the end of the street, including one called Furlong House, which is on Tornos property. And just the other evening, in an hour and a half time span, 12 unfamiliar cars, a dozen cars, just drove down the street oblivious to the rural nature or the, you know, what the street really is like, you know, without concern for people that live there. And, you know, there's a couple of regular cars during that time period as well. So we've asked the town board and I want to bring it to the planning board's attention that even though they have plugged in, changed directions to get there, that people are driving down the street to go to that venue. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm a neighbor of Mike Beesworth, and I have no problems with this subdivision as it is.
So let me just stop you right now because we're having a public hearing.
Yes.
And anything that you want to say about the applicant can be put on record, but you have to wait for the public hearing. Okay? That would not be suitable for this public comment. So in a few minutes, just.
Okay.
Okay, so if we don't have any more public comments, we'll move on to the itinerary on the agenda. And first, applicant is Beesworth, public hearing on a three subdivision. Applicants here.
Sure. So the subdivision question is four lots. Where lot one is supposed to be 77.9 acres. Lot two is proposed to be 3.5 acres. Lot three is proposed to be 4.4 acres. And lot four is proposed to be 4.4 acres. The lots are the -- The two, three, and four are all located with access off of Stone Road, with lot one gaining access from Spillway Road. The parcel is within -- The carcel's within the A 2.5 dunfitter, where the minimum lot size is 2.5 acres. So all lots meet that requirement. The major kind of item that still needs to be addressed is that the access from Spillway Road is gained through a 33-foot wide easement, which is a two. And so we need a little bit of detail, more detail on the status of that easement. I think we would see -- It looks like we received something, but I haven't had a chance to look at it, and neither has the county attorney. Attorney would need to have a chance to look at it. But in general, it would seem like the area would be appropriate for access and that the frontage is acceptable from Stone Road. So it meets the 50-foot lot frontage on Stone Road that's required for zoning code. But again, we need clarification on the access from Spillway Road. Otherwise, many of our comments have been addressed, but that access is really maybe outstanding.
Mr. Beesworth, do you want to make any comments on the board and also the --
Not at this time. I don't think I need to make any comments. But I would be glad to answer anybody's questions in regards to what we have on the map or what we have going on at the current time.
I just wanted to state that we have submitted a deed for the 33-foot wide right-of-life that dates back to 1858. It's certainly paid on the deed. That the existing roadway has been servicing its property since that time. I know it submitted out a little late, so you may not have a chance to take a look at it, but it is there. And that is the document that published that day.
So that is something that we'll have the planning board adjourned review and provide a comment on. That's part of lot one?
So at this time, I would like to have a motion of one of the board members to open up the public hearing. Carl?
Second.
Peter? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Okay, so we have the open public hearing at this time. And I know when you had a statement, if you want to make it.
Sure, I just -- I mean, I've seen all the pictures. I was saying lot one and lot two. I'm just curious what this case two net was. And is that part of access to Stone Road to the large property?
Can I say something? Can we have each person that wants to talk about this project? Do we have their name and credit where it's recorded at?
And stand up so we can hear possibly?
Yeah. Lynn, if you want to go through the microphone, I'll hear.
I just had a question about the gap between lots one and see what we need on the map, and does that provide access to the large property, Stone Road, did it?
So as a way of answering, this is a simple answer. It is part of lot one. There's a screen crossing, and the applicant is trying to avoid crossing in a generic over the screen, so they prefer the access from Spillway. Thank you.
Yes.
Well, I think you raised one major concern my neighbor I have. And apparently, it's to yet be figured out exactly the access from Stone Road. So I don't know if I do have more information on that.
Your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Dave Moore. I'm the only adjacent probably. I think the only other comment, and I don't think I'm speaking out in terms for my neighbor. She thought it was probably the most to her property line when she sold the house. That's -- I just put it out there. And so otherwise, I understand.
Thank you. Anybody have any more comments that they would like to make?
Is that a house proposed with the 78 block? Is that a sustainable? I'm sorry. I think here. So the properties, do they have houses or no?
There's, I think what people are saying are houses. That is a plot plan showing septic and houses. So what it has is a board of health approval already for septic.
For all of them?
Yeah, for all three lots, not the floor, because we're not doing any larger 78 acres. Whatever remain vacant at this time.
Okay.
If someday we retire, we don't have some money, we may be filled back there.
Yeah, right.
But right now, everything there is what was required by the town of Hurley to do what is called a board of health approval on the lot. So that's all that's engineering to show that it can be done. But other than that, hell, I'm just probably going to be selling the lot at some point.
Okay, and the other?
So there's no houses. There's no correct plan. It would be individual. They would have to do that.
Okay, and the access is only one piece, the one block coming on Spillway?
There is, as I said, there's an easement that comes in from Spillway Road right across from your house. Yes, and then there remains a hundred foot cut between, I think it's lot. It's between the two lots. There's a hundred feet. It's only 50 feet required, but there's, I gave them 100 feet. So they have plenty of room to work with whatever they have. Because if they can get onto that property, in case something ever happens and somebody else wanted to do it. I've walked around for five years. I've done our best way to do it. And this is kind of what we came up with. There are good people who live inside lots.
So that's that one lot is the one lot with the access from Spillway?
Yes, yeah, that 78 acres is just one lot. The other three are on Stone Road on the hard side, wouldn't do that.
102 block.
102. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm just curious because until you purchased that, there's never been any vehicles coming out of those woods.
Yeah.
I've been there for a long time. There's never been.
Yeah, we lived there too, and everyone I talked to was accident. I mean, I have a survey map from the original person I bought it from.
Yeah.
Who got it from the original people before them.
Right.
And it always showed that easement there.
Yeah. That's interesting because we've never ever had anybody.
No, rather than a hunter or something like that.
Yeah, nobody. So I'm curious. So what kind of traffic's going to be in and out of there?
Yeah, no, it will only be lots going in and out of there.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
Yes.
Mike, could you explain the soap fence? I didn't get a chance to read up on that. What is that?
Oh, the soap fence? Oh, the soap fence is going to be, it's a rear iron when you build to protect your excavation from any waterways or running off or running downhill onto somebody else's property. So the soap fence is something they just put around, and it catches any runoff.
Is that temporary?
The soap fence?
Yeah.
Yes, that's only for excavation.
It's a bunch of wooden stakes with some plastic.
Yeah, it's very.
So the planning board just got the information on Z, and we're not going to, we're going to keep the public hearing open for the next month so we can review the information that was sent in. And so I just wanted to make sure, does anybody else that wants to have a public, you know, during the public hearing, it's not just tonight, it's going to be, it's going to continue next month as well. So you can come up with another comment or whatever, question. And look, we need to review this deed, and then we could provide the applicant with more better direction. So on your motion.
Will that be August 30th, the next meeting? Will that be the public hearing continued?
No.
Oh, okay. It's August 30th. We're not on a meeting in September.
So it's August 30th.
So the public hearing, the most of you closed here. Lady Carl, secondment. All in favor of keeping the public hearing open?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any extensions? Okay, so Mr. Beesworth, we're just going to keep this public hearing open so we review this new information and then next time we'll continue. Our next applicant is Dunkin' Donuts, site plan, Dunkin'. So we're going to have a plan of review, the memorandum on Dunkin'.
So the applicant proposes to construct a Dunkin' Donuts address on the drive-through on 0.5 acres of the corner of 28 and 375. The use is permitted with site plan review approval by the planning board, which is going to be one general business district. And it's only a drive-through. Many of the comments have been addressed. A sign plan remains outstanding. We have reviewed the sign plan, but we have comments. An updated sign plan remains to be provided. Parking has been addressed. We've submitted also six parking spaces where only, where one handicap accessible. So this was a discussion with the planning board last month. The question was raised at the planning board meeting as to whether handicap parking can count towards the total needed parking spaces, where five employees would need parking spaces, only five were shown, and that included handicap parking. So this adds a parking space so that whether or not someone's handicapped, the handicap space will always remain open, and employees can have parking spaces. So the sign plan. So lighting, International Dark Sky Guidance recommends that light levels at the residential property boundary not exceed 0.05 foot candles and not exceed 0.1 foot candles at a commercial property boundary. The lighting plan exceeds these limits at all boundaries of the site. Changes to the lighting plan are at the discretion of the planning board. The town doesn't really have lighting requirements at this point. I believe that there are some in the pipeline, and International Dark Sky Guidance is, will be a requirement for site plan review. We have reviewed the lighting plan, or the landscaping plan. We think it's fine, but I defer to the planning board for their, you know, final review and comment, of course. We had a discussion with the applicant at the last meeting. The town engineers did issue a comment letter dated July 37th regarding drainage and board of health approvals, as well as DEC approvals for the septic and septic water and drainage. So we defer to him in general. We still have questions about the maintenance of site distance on the driveway of 375. We understand that the applicant has widened the roadway from, I don't know, 0.5, 35 feet to 25 or 26 feet. But it's still a questionable width. The board has expressed concerns about the width. So ensuring that the vegetation on that site distance is maintained through easements or just a note on the plan that, you know, that area will be, will be maintained in a clear manner. The board had requested that an additional traffic analysis be performed at the prior meeting between 6:00 and 9:00 a.m. on workdays and 5:30 and 8:30 p.m. on weekdays, and then between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 and 5:00 p.m. on Saturdays and Sundays. We haven't received that. I believe we received a comment, but it was not detailed or descriptive and was not really an analysis in the way I believe the planning board had envisioned. So that can be discussed later as well. The staffing queue is now down on sheet 11, as we have discussed. But we had previously noted that the peak hour trip count does not really explain how many cars will be staffed on a queue during that peak hour and what the efficiency of the line is, i.e. like how many vehicles will be processed and whether this queue adequately handles that 90-peak trips. So there's really not a comparison or a breakdown of that. So again, and as discussed before, in the traffic study, it's not clear what kind of peak hour is quantified. Peak hour is never really defined in the bulk of the discussion. This is a type-two action under Sika. It's the construction of a non-residential structure of less than 1,000 square feet. So no further review under Sika is required. Obviously, today, the board is holding a public hearing for this project, which is at their discretion. So they totally hold this public hearing. Traffic and circulation, just in summary, remains outstanding. Traffic incirculation, just in summary, remains outstanding and should be addressed. And in summarizing the engineer's conditions, the following should be required as conditions of approval. Ulster County Department of Health's final approval of the water supply system and wastewater disposal system. New York State DOT permitting and approval of the drainage plan per permit number 32 issuance. New York State DOT permitting and approval of the traffic impact study and the entrance plan per permit number 33. And the conditions of comment number 23, which are as strict on asset. So, comment number 26. Again, in consistent, consistent with the town engineer's letter, we did review all that documentation. And we note that some things should be added to the plan. Decommissioning of the existing wealth should clearly meet DOH requirements and be provided to the board, the engineer, and Ulster County Health Department. The ballards should be shown on the site plan that are supposed to help. A note should be added to the plan that additional monitoring of hydrocarbons must be done quarterly for the first year and annually thereafter, until the DOH deems that testing is no longer necessary. This was requested by the DOH. And then a note should be added to the plan that once conducted, a full top part five water analysis must be conducted and the results admitted to DOH. Again, that was a request of DOH. So that's my view.
So do you, do you want to tell people here what you're intending?
So, I'm John Joseph, I am the applicant for the project. So I'm John Joseph, I'm the applicant for the project. I have with me Gary Menock, Menock engineers, who's a civil engineer, private Florida engineer, and Star Kip, a great man, he's exploring DOT queuing. And all the other things that are related to performance transportation and the permits. So first of all, I'm sorry to not hit your. Yeah, so, kind of, I like that. So, you seem a little off, sorry. So on the sign plan, I guess I'm fairly able to pull that together. As far as the lighting goes, whatever you want. So I think if you guys give us whatever cable we want. Landscape and plant, vegetation, which means. So that is the view of the community, right? They have 12 foot right of way from off the edge of the pavement. So it's really not a commitment that I can grant, and they already have.
That's one of them, that's an acre.
So the north, all the way up, they have 12 foot, which is on the site directly up, and then paper can't tent that you get a hold of it on. I think the board is more concerned about immediate neighbor. So, like I said, the work of transportation has to be something that lies across it.
And so they, does that easement exist?
It does.
So it's part of the right of left?
It's part of the right of left.
So they'll ensure that it can be used up?
Yeah, it's really, it's not to me to go on their property.
It's just a matter of maintaining the clearing of that site.
Right, okay.
So we will check with them and have them, you know, do their work. And if not, we'll do it on our behalf. But I need to embody that, as part of our DOT department, to ask that if they own the time to do, you can work it in there. So that should satisfy.
Yeah, they'll just get something like that and write in here on the note or?
Yeah, yeah, for both your, like, builders or what do you have. And we can make that part of the, you know, like, the letter. As far as the weekend traffic and queuing, turn it over to Sir.
My name is Star Kip, a free man, licensed engineer in New York. I have a memorandum that is our weekend analysis for Saturday between 7:00 or 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., and Sunday from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. We were aware that you wanted to look at the weekday between 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., but the traffic is heaviest during the previous study period, which was 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. I can distribute these, I only have seven, so, if that's all right? Just do a digital copy of that for all of these? Okay. It's a, just two pages writing, it's a lot of figures. All you know, it has this. You guys have to share?
Okay.
In summary, in a brief summary, we found that the, we did find that the Sunday traffic was high between 3:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. But the trip generation by the site is actually less than the weekday morning peak hour for the proposed use. And our analysis found that the intersection of New York State Route 375 and New York State Route 28 will still operate at acceptable levels of service fee or better, which is good.